Have a ER visit, it ain't worth it.
Yeah. Yeah, we went to the regional tournament for the state playoffs for wrestling. We took nine kids from the high school and four made it to the made it to the state tournament. One junior, no, two juniors, a sophomore and a freshman. Caleb's one of them. He's one of them, he's a sophomore.
From DS.
Yeah, he's really good. I've been impressed with him.
No, not yet. I think it's missed to take a look or look for the whole policy. We need to officially update it.
Right, right. Yes, I gotta zoom tomorrow from, I think it's nine to three thirty. It's gonna, I told my wife, I said, Zoom classes never last. You know, you get up, take a break, they're not.
Coach Carpenter is young, he's a good guy.
Probably being better.
Coach, he knows the boys.
Yeah, exactly.
He's got to prove this community, he's got to.
Have you seen these people that prop their picture up in front of them?
He's ready for that commitment, it's a big job, so. But I got full faith in him.
I was going to start something.
Right. We got a good foundation.
I think Chris Metzger's ready to have a full-on series of his very first try.
He'll be the first to tell you that.
I can't talk much, I didn't play when I was at high school. Made a lot of balls walking in hounds up there. Keep me on that football field.
Yeah. It's pretty just.
You say on this one.
Two thousand twenty-five, and we call the order to the meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. And we have a young man here tonight, pastor of First Baptist Church, and he's going to do our invocation for us. Would you come up, Mr. Allen, Nick Allen?
If you would, bow with me. Father God, we just love you so much tonight, Father, and we just want to humble ourselves before you, God. And Lord, I thank you, Lord, for this group of folks coming in here tonight that love their county. And Father, I especially want to pray for these gentlemen before me. Father, I want to pray for John Shaw. Father, I just want to pray for Steve Tetter, Steve Hare, Jeffrey Pope, Chip Hurley. And Father, I pray that you guide each one of these men. And Father, I pray that they lean not on their own understanding, Father, but on the one who knows all, and that is you, God. And Lord, I just pray, Father, that you preside over this meeting. And Father, that we can, God, just feel your presence in this room. And Father, we just pray for our county, we pray for our community, Father. There's such a need, and Lord, we know that that ultimate need is Jesus Christ. And Father, that's why I pray that you guide and direct each area of business in this room. You guide each area of the wisdom, Father, that you give them from on high tonight. And Father, we just want you to be a part of every aspect. And God, we just want to give you all the glory. Father, go before us. And Father, we just want to just fully trust you in all that you're gonna do, all that you're doing now, and all that you have done. And Father, we ask this in the mighty, holy, precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Would you stand, please, as your opener for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys have your agenda in front of you. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Pope, second by John Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Nobody on public forum for tonight? So we'll pass adding our buddies on for, on the line for it. Mr. Manus, you want to?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a couple of presentations tonight. First, we will honor and congratulate Stephanie Smith for her service to the county. Stephanie, if you want to come forward. This is also the opportunity for you, Stephanie, to say, whatever you want to now, you can't be fired.
Oh, Lord, I'll get ready for this.
Stephanie, for those of you that don't, I'm trying to stay close to the mic. Our IT department says, the world can hear me if I stay close to the mic. Stephanie served eight years here at the county as DSS director, career in public service. And there was a short period of time in her career here where she helped with the leadership role for animal services. And folks may be surprised to know that during her tenure with her leadership at animal services, we saved six hundred and forty-nine animals, found a new home.
That's fantastic.
We have a little resolution here under your service. We're up to say anything you want to, see at least one colleague here and.
Oh, yeah, my husband's here. Yes, and I don't know how to stand for this thing, so I'm gonna try to do this. I'm not voting against it.
Don't cry.
I'm already teared up. You talk about dogs.
So you're welcome to give us a piece of your mind. You want to go off, we can do that, too.
That's fine. I want to thank everyone who had a part in my coming to Montgomery County and staying here. It truly, I ended up, I think, on my highest note, I loved working here. I worked for the state for years, I worked for Moore County and live in Moore County. But there's no place to me like Montgomery County, as I still shop here. I love Montgomery County. And I want to, want to say thank you for that. And I told Frankie a while back, I said, listen, there's anybody you want me to talk trash about on social media? I can do that now, if y'all. He said, what, what, what? Well, I hadn't even been doing that or what.
I'll make you a list.
But I did want to keep the job.
I'll make you a list.
You know, I, you know, I don't like people talking bad about anybody over here, because I love it over here. And so I truly thank you. I didn't know if I'd be ready for retirement. I'm actually loving it, but I'm not forgetting about the animals. And I'm not forgetting about the people that I work beside in DSS either. Great bunch of people, love this community, and they try to help the citizens and taxpayers of this county. So thank you for the opportunity, and I will not be far from here. I won't be a stranger. Thank you, Frankie. Thank you all. Yes, sir.
Frankie, didn't you have something to talk about weather?
Yeah, I told Stephanie on the way in, we're gonna change her name to Elsa, because each time we're gonna honor her. It's snow that always comes with.
I'm ready, I'm ready, I'm wanting snow, but I'm having to leave, so I'm not gonna get to see the snow probably. But I missed it last time, it was in South Carolina. And by the, I had to come back here, and then I was afraid to get out, because it was supposed to start snowing. We got a sprinkle, but yeah, I'm all for snow, a couple of good times of snow. Especially now that I don't work at DSS and we don't have to worry about a shelter or anything like that. Moore County opened one if one flake fell. And here, I'll never forget what Robbie Smith told me the first time, right after I started in December of 2016. There was a little scare in January when we met, you know, and I thought, oh, I'm ready. Moore County has sent me to up there in Edmondsburg, and I know how to do all this, and I'm ready. And he said, Stephanie, we're not in Moore County. He said, these people have got generators and all on the back of their trucks and their dog boxes. We're gonna be fine here, and we've had to open a shelter, I think, one time. So hopefully you won't have to do that, because people work hard at DSS during those times. I don't know if people know that, but they do. And it was a pleasure to work, to help the county, but I hope you don't have any of that. I hope the county employees might get a few hours off and enjoy and be with their families, you know, if it's snow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion, though?
Hey, and if you'll find me on Facebook, you know, I can let you know some things.
Okay, so listen, I.
Since you can say what you want.
And I won't tell the sources, but I'll put what you want, I.
Thank you.
I'm thankful for everything.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have one more presentation. Leanne Bogasala from Malden and Jenkins, who is the accounting firm that conducts our annual audit. And she's here to present the findings and audit results and the condition of the county's finances. Lee?
So, yeah, I'm Leanne Bogasala. I'm an audit director at Malden and Jenkins, and we serve as your external audit firm. And we just finished up the fiscal year 2024 audit, so that's July 1st, 2023 through 6/30/2024. And so we're gonna go through those audit results now and then go through some required communication that we do have to tell the commissioners. But you can stop me at any time if you have any questions. I will tell you who our audit team is, you get familiar with our names. We keep a consistent audit team, so we've been working on the audit for several years. We'll go through your audit opinions, some required communications, and then kind of go through some things that are coming down the pipeline that finance will have to consider. So this screen right here just depicts who Malden and Jenkins are. We've been in business for over a hundred years. We serve over seven hundred government clients a year throughout our six states and fourteen offices. And that number grows every, every year. A significant portion of our total revenue for our firm is from governmental clients. Your audit team this year included myself and Tim, who act as, I'm the one that signs your audit opinion, and Tim Lyons is your quality control partner. He's an independent partner that reviews what I do during audit and your financial statements to make sure everything's correct. And then your team that was doing all the testing was led by Tesla. She's been on the audit for several years. So the first audit opinion that you have in your financial statements is on overall financial condition and the reporting thereof. And in that opinion, we consider the internal controls of the county for the purposes of expressing an opinion on the basic financial statements, but not for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. Our audit was performed in accordance with GASS, which is generally accepted standard of the United States of America, as well as government auditing standards. We provide reasonable, not absolute assurance that your basic financial statements are free and material in the statement, but overall, the financial statements are the responsibility of county's management. For that report on your basic financial statements, you receive an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. That's the highest level assurance that we can provide, that your financial statements present fairly in accordance with those standards. So that is the first opinion in your financial statements, and we will go through the other opinions. But I kind of wanted to pinpoint the financial position of the county. And by doing that, I wanted to kind of pinpoint the general fund. So this picture that you have here is from a local government commission template, where we input the information to your financial statements, and it spits all this summary information, which they call financial performance indicators. And what this indicates to you all is that your fund balance in the general fund is very healthy. So if you'll see, in the green for fiscal year 2024, you had a hundred and four percent of fund balance over expenditures. So you had more fund balance in your general fund than you had expenditures for the year. Most counties your size have thirty-nine percent. So you have double what other counties have. And so that basically means that your fund balance, and this is on page seventeen of the financial statements, and the general fund ended at forty-eight million dollars, and your expenditures for the year were thirty-seven million dollars. It just shows financial strength for the county. When you're talking about fund balance, there are different types of fund balance. You have restricted fund balance, it has to be spent for a specific purpose, committed and unassigned fund balance in the general fund. But your unassigned fund balance in the general fund is thirty-four million. So thirty-four million out of forty-eight million is basically what people call your cash. That's your money that you could spend that hasn't been obligated elsewhere. So seventy-one percent of the total general fund fund balance is available to this event, which is very significant for a county your size. So that's just kind of indicator of the financial health of the county. And just kind of put that into consideration, your fund balance in your general fund was forty-eight million. You had forty-four million in unrestricted cash. So it's kind of, it's very close with your, with your fund balance and the available cash for the county. So I just kind of wanted to pinpoint that. The next slide here goes over some indicators that the local government commission has put together. So every time we submit your audit to the local government commission, they review it and approve it. And it did get approved this week by the local government commission. But we have to submit what's called a data input form. It takes information from your financial statements and throws it through their template, and sometimes it produces red flags. So you do have a couple of red flags, some of these you've had in prior audits. But the local government commission requires you to respond to these FPICs, or financial performance indicators of concern, within sixty days in my presentation. So I do want you to know that, because the commissioners will have to sign a memo going to the LGC saying, this is how we plan to fix it. So the first one up here is your water and sewer capital asset condition ratio. And you're very close to having the recommended condition ratio of point five. The county's at point four-five. And what this means is you have some assets that are either fully depreciated already or getting very close to being depreciated. And the idea here is the local government commission wants you to assess your capital asset policy and ensure that the use. If you're still using an asset, then the wasn't correct, it needs to be extended. So for example, if you had a piece of equipment or a vehicle where your capital asset policy says it's only good for five years, but you're really using it ten, it will flag in this, in this calculation here.
On that, also, is that property, building, property structure?
It's all, it's all capital assets.
It's just not equipment?
And so what a lot of people are doing to respond to this is they're telling the local government commission, I'm gonna review my capital asset policy, I'm gonna make sure that those useful lives seem appropriate. And from that, we may be able to fix this. Now, if you go and change your capital asset policy today, that doesn't mean that the ratio is just automatically gonna work. It will take time to get it to work. But that's a typical response you would give them, and a lot of entities get this, this, this indicator. The next indicator is that the audit was technically late, so you'll have to respond and say how you're gonna work to make that better in the next year. And all of these, the, some of these are things that, these indicators, like on these next slides, are things that have already been addressed in the audit. So the next one says that the audit disclosed a budget violation, and that was just one of your funds were over budget by a hundred and three dollars. And it doesn't matter how much it is, it's a hundred and three dollars. So the way to fix that in 2015 is to just ensure whenever you're closing the books that you get any budget amendments that need to be put in, and making sure that your departments aren't spending money that the finance department doesn't know about, and make sure they're adhering to their budgets. Number thirteen says that the county did have material weaknesses in the fiscal year that need to be addressed. And your county finance department has already addressed those within the audit. So there is a corrective action plan in the audit to address those, and we'll go through those in two slides. And the next one, number fifteen, was there was a finding in the current year related to your finance director not properly being bonded. And again, we'll address that in two slides, because there's a finding for that. So there are five total indicators of concern that you'll have to talk to the LGC about in the form of a, form of a letter. And then they'll accept it, or they'll ask you to amend your, your ideas. So the next opinions that we give, we give three more opinions, and they're in the back of your financial statements. The first one is what's called a government auditing standards report, or normally called a yellow book audit report. That's when we test internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations, and we provide an opinion in accordance with government auditing standards. And we did issue three findings in this yellow book opinion, which we'll cover in the next slide. And then you had two compliance reports. So as part of just being a county and any government agency, you received a lot of federal and state grants. As part of our audit, we review your grant funding during the year, and we select programs to audit. And in the current year, we audited three federal programs and one state program. We audited the Medicaid program, the Opera program, community facility loan, and the North Carolina lottery. And you'll see in the next two bullets that you received no findings related to the grants. So we issued a report for your compliance with federal laws, programs under the Uniform Grant Guidance, and you received a clean audit opinion for that, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And then we issued a report with your compliance with state programs in accordance with State and North Carolina Single Audit Implementation Act. And again, there was no finding, so clean reports there. The first material weakness in your audit opinion is a non-compliance with GS 159 rule, which changed, this rule changed effective January 1st, 2023, which requires your finance director of the county to be individually bonded in accordance with the statute. So the requirement is that you have to be bonded for ten percent of your total expenditures of the county, or up to a million dollars. So because of the amount of expenditures you have in the county, your finance director needed to be bonded for one million dollars. And during the audit, they were only bonded for a hundred thousand dollars. So we were required to write this up as a non-compliance finding. And at this time, your internal finance director does have the proper bonding that is needed. The next finding that you have is a material weakness in general overall reporting of the balances. So as part of our audit, when we start the audit, we get the books and records of the county. And these are the material adjustment entries that were required to fix the records of the county. The first one was in the public utilities fund. We had an adjustment of a hundred and four thousand related to inventory. The county did a count in June of 2024 to count how much inventory they had, and your books and records didn't reflect the changes from that inventory count. The next entry was also required in the public utilities fund for nineteen thousand dollars, and that was related to two assets that we knew were added in the year, but they weren't added to your trial balance. The third entry related to the Conservation District Board, and there was an entry for twenty-two thousand dollars, needed to correct your fund balance in that fund. And then there was an entry to the emergency telephone for seven thousand one hundred ninety-one to recruit June revenue that wasn't recorded. And then lastly, there was an adjustment made to the school maintenance project fund for seventy-one thousand dollars to reverse an accrual entry that had been posted, that had not been posted by the county. So if you kind of add those all together, it is actually material to the county, and that's why you received a material weakness for your books and records. There are a couple of other general entries that were made as part of the audit, but they were brought to our attention as opposed to us finding them. And then some, some very small entries that we helped the county post as part of our audit and helping to write the financial statements. The third material weakness relates to the restatement of prior year balances. So the first two items that up here, are up here, are related to opiate settlement revenue. So recently, the GFAL, that's your organization for governments, came out with a different, additional information of how they wanted opiate settlement funds to be recorded, and the local government commission of the North Carolina agreed with them. And so the local government commission issued a memo saying, everybody needs to record opiate settlement revenue this way, which basically books the revenue on your financial statements as if you have received all of it, although it's gonna be received over eighteen years. And so this has nothing to do with what, the county did not make a mistake at all. This is just a clarification that was received. And so we had to adjust the balances that were recorded at the fund level and at the government-wide level for this. And every single county that I audit has the exact same prior period adjustment. This has nothing to do with the county's recording, it's just additional information that came out. And then the last error correction was when sales tax comes into the county, it's booked in the general fund. But there was some sales tax for fiscal year 2022 and 2023 of a hundred and forty-six thousand that should have made its way to the school maintenance project fund, and it hadn't been transferred over. And so we adjusted the books and records, because that should have happened in the prior year.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
I don't know if you have the answer. It's my understanding that those funds are not guaranteed. We, Department of Justice has been clear, the opiate settlement funds are not guaranteed. And therefore, if, if in the event ten years from now, there is an adjustment on that, I'm assuming that there'll be a way to rectify that to where the county is still held. It's not our problem that this has occurred, because it bothers me a little bit that we have to assume that that is our revenue. But I was, I was made very clear that that is not a guarantee.
There is a memorandum of, for that specific money, there's a memorandum of understanding that basically the county gave up their right to litigate to be in this agreement that they would accept the money over eighteen years. So far, the money has been coming in as scheduled. And so what the local government commission and the GFAL has said is you need to book the revenue for what you expect to receive. If you do not expect to receive the revenue, then you record a hundred percent allowance against it. So you book the revenue and the receivable. As you receive the money, your receivable goes down. But if you didn't expect to receive it, you book an allowance against it. So if we find out later, let's just say someone in the memorandum goes bankrupt, and they are no longer able to pay. and they are no longer able to pay. To make sure that you always have adjusted the expenditures every year so that you don't go over, you don't go over your expenditures.
Thank you.
You can be conservative with that, that that's what you're asking.
I would like to be able to plan the next 18 years, but to date, it's been wait, wait for a dispersment by which we don't have a clear date on each year before we can actually say yes or no to what it is we'd like to do. We don't have a clear idea of what those numbers are. They tell us that they are, but they've changed every year. You know, I would say this is, this is fantastic if I could say that, okay, I'm guaranteed 2.3 million over the course of the next 16 years. And we, as a commission, could look at that and say, okay, here's how we would like to spend that money over the next 16 years. But the reality of it is, is that we have to wait, as Mother May I, from the state to give us that money before we can make a decision. And with the county, we get 2.3 million, you know, there are cities in this, in this state that got two, three times that. So it's a very small amount of money, relatively speaking. And having to wait every year for them to give us, you know, the East Mill is frustrating. But yet, here we are, the state says that we need to account for all this money in our finances. I don't, I don't agree with that. I think that we shouldn't have to account for it unless, unless I'm guaranteed that money, which we're not. Because, yes, we can't go into litigation against the pharmaceutical industry again. But private entities, let's say a church or somebody else that feels like they've been wrong, the families of somebody who's overdosed and died, they still have the right to get in that pool of money. So I think that's, it is what it is, I understand it. I'm glad that North Carolina is also in, in agreeance with this. And therefore, there is, in the event we don't get 2.3 million, you know, we'll be able to adjust that and we're fine with our.
Well, your revenue would already be booked. So at that point, then we would be, you know, if additional information comes out, we'll be recording an allowance or we will write off the receivable. So every.
It's not going to hurt us either way. The, the effect would be that we can't plan. That's really, is that what you're saying, John?
Well, I mean, it's just, I think it's, I'm sort of splitting hairs here. And I guess it's more of a personal issue in that like, we have to say that we are going to receive this money. And I promise you, at the end of this, it will not be 2,300,070. There's going to be adjustments along the way. But yet, we're supposed to account for this money, but that's not the case. I mean, every year, we can sit and talk about what we'd like to do with opiate settlement funds, but until we actually get it in the bank account each year, we can't do it.
And there is an award notification that says how much you're supposed to get every year. But I tell you, depends on what day you pull it.
It does. It's, 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 you know, it is what it is. I'm appreciative for the funding. I'm not, definitely not.
We've used it very well.
All right.
Leanne, this is a prime example of some of the things that, that I try to explain. And the best way I can explain it is you're talking one language right now.
Yes, this is, this is modified accrual and full accrual. It's not how much cash you actually have.
Yeah, so we always talk about the cash basis with our budget, expenditures, expenditure reports, revenue reports. So actually, the last couple of slides with those itemized things, it's all on the accrual basis.
Correct, but in modified accrual with this, in year one, when I was like, look Frankie, we're going to have the money. I promise you, let's go ahead and make some plans. You were like, John, we can't do that. So, you know, that's, that was my.
It's another thing I'll point out with the accrual basis. When I first started my career, we didn't have to do a lot of guesswork like this. Take sales tax, for example, or our budget, for example. We have to have our budget adjusted by June 30th. Well, we still have expenditures coming in or invoices coming in. And we just hope we've accounted for them. We still have sales tax that's going to come in for three more months.
Yep.
And, you know, a lot can happen. We've closed out our year and sales tax that we're going to get, we have no clue. Absolute no clue.
If it don't get no worse than this, you're doing pretty good.
Yep.
I'll take this.
Just wait till I tell you about GASB 101. I really love that one. Okay, so the required communication that I'm giving you, sometimes people, auditors do this in a form of a letter, but we do it in form of PowerPoint because sometimes it's just easier to digest a little bit. So just letting you know, there are a lot of significant accounting policies that the county uses to create their financial statements. Those are disclosed in note one of the basic financial statements. During the year, the county did implement GASB statement 100, which is related to accounting changes and error corrections. The reason they implemented that is because we had the prior period adjustments, which are not called prior period adjustments anymore, they're called error corrections. So those are disclosed in note 15 of your financial statements. All the policies that the county have have been reviewed as part of our audit and we find them in accordance with generally accepted accounting policies. The county is not involved in any controversial or margin issues. Within your financial statements also, there are a lot of judgments and estimates used by management to project future events. Some of that things that you're thinking about are your OPAP and your pension liability, which are actuarially determined. We reviewed those estimates during the audit and we found no issues with the county's estimates. From a relationship standpoint, we got full cooperation from management. We had no disagreements with management during the audit. As part of the audit, we do ask management to sign a management representation letter, basically saying the information they gave to us was complete and accurate. We are not aware of county consulting with other accountants. We asked that the county, if you have any questions about technical knowledge, GASB, anything, you come straight to us and we will help you. That's what we're here for. But as far as consultations, we are not aware of any. From a significant issues perspective, we didn't incur any significant issues with relation to just how management operates or plans to operate that would affect the financial statements. From an audit adjustment standpoint, we've talked about the general entries that we required management to book, to change the books and records. But there are three general entries or adjustments that we passed on the county proposing and putting into their financial records. And that's because we did not consider them material to the county. But standards require us to tell you what they are. So the first one is we passed on a prior period adjustment related to NCDEQ revenue. So this is your revenue from Department Environmental Quality. That was an entry of $27,000, which we didn't think was material to post a prior period adjustment. The other two are related to recording GASB 87 and GASB 96 leases. GASB 87 was implemented a couple of years ago, and then after that, we implemented GASB 96. Both are immaterial to the county. You're literally booking an asset and a liability, and for the most part, they net to zero. So we, we choose not to book those liabilities on the financial statements. But if any time the city, the county enters into any leases that would be material, we would put them on your financial statements. From a financial disclosure perspective, we do review the financial disclosures in the financial statements to make sure they're neutral, consistent, and provide clarity. The next slide basically says that there is other information in the basic financial statements that we do not opine on. And you'll see those specifically outlined in our financial opinion that we, we may look at it, but we don't actually audit it. And if any time you do provide to provide our financial statements to any organizations, we ask that you do not add to the financials and you do not take away from the financial statements. You keep it in whole. And the last item that's up here is that Madison Jenkins is independent of the county. That is all the information that kind of concludes our audit. This slide right here gives you information of additional services that we can provide. Anytime, you know, the county management lets us know there's something they're thinking about or they're wanting to do, we can see if we can help them with that or we can refer them to, you know, some of our colleague firms that can help them do different types of services. And then there are three new accounting pronouncements that we think that the county will need to review. I'm not going to read the bullet points to you, but the one that is coming up for fiscal year 2025 is the recording of compensated absences. You already record liability for what you expect to pay your employees for their vacation time. And the way that's being calculated will be changing in fiscal year 2025. And it's going to be really fun, estimate of what you expect to pay. And then there is GASB statement 102 for certain risk disclosures and GASB 104 related to assets. And as these standards become ready to be implemented, we'll work with the county management to make sure that they're understanding the statement and then we're properly accounting for it and disclosing it.
I've got a question on the, on the 101. Is that something we're not doing? Is that, is that as far as the employees leave and that kind of thing? Is that something we're not, are we getting in trouble in that area? Is that why that's coming up? Why is that?
This is just a different way of calculating. So there's different pots of money. You have vacation leave and you have sick leave. So the county doesn't ever pay off sick leave. The employee leaves, they're not obligated to pay out the sick leave. But the vacation leave, currently, you're booking 100% of what you expect to pay. Under the new standard, you're supposed to calculate what you more than likely are going to pay.
Yes.
Which is judgment. And so we'll have to work with the county finance. I actually have a draft email that I'm putting together for all my clients to basically say, here's what you should do, here's step one, here's step two. But you're going to have to go get historical information from your HR, your payroll department of, here's all the employees, this is what they started with, this is what they used, this is what they donated, this is what they forfeited, and come up with some type of methodology for determining what you more likely than not are going to pay.
So it's not something we're doing, done wrong, it's just standard change?
It's just a clarification, yeah. It's just making sure that, because if you, if you say that you're going to pay 100%, are you really?
Right, okay.
So you're overestimating your liability by booking 100%. And so this may actually, well, I can't tell you that it's going to change it because then you have to consider if, what methodology you're using. Last in, are they using the last vacation they received or what they first received years ago? So it's, it's a lot of.
But then you also have graduated skills like we have that you're going to have to think about as well.
But then you have to calculate, well, what of that are they rolling into retirement too? And, you know, it's just, and then if you get people donating it to someone else that has a different pay rate, it gets pretty complicated.
I can imagine.
So.
We do calculate our compensated absences, compensatory time. And if, not to get too deep in the weeds, but you'll see a statement of, we've got this much money. And then Leanne's will say, but you can only spend this much. That's because something like compensated absences are booked as a liability and we have to subtract that because we are likely to pay that down the road. So we can't count on that as being money we can spend. And there's other examples, but compensated absences is one of those liabilities that we currently track and we have to reduce the amount we can spend based on those things.
We do buy them sometime, don't we?
We have bought out leave time. That's a financial move because it, the cheapest time to buy it out is now versus if you let it sit on your books, it's just going to grow over time as pay rates change.
If you have too many to hit at one time?
Yeah, if you have too many to hit at one time, it could be a cash flow issue. Hopefully, we never get there. So we're not in a position for that to affect us, but it could if you, if our position changes.
So just, you know, this standard will likely require you to update your policies a little bit because it's going to have to be a little bit more descriptive of the different methodology you're using to calculate it. So just keep that in mind. And some people calculate leave based on a calendar year and not a fiscal year. And we're going to have a lot of fun with this.
Employees calculate real fast.
Yeah. Okay, and this last slide here just tells you as an additional service for being our clients, we do offer CPE to anyone that would like CPE. We do quarterly trainings of eight hours, so a total of 32 hours a year in training. These are a couple of the things that we have taught on recently. But if anyone's interested, I can always add you to our list of those. And that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Great job.
Did okay.
Yeah, it sounds like you know what you're doing.
I've been doing this a while. And I'll let you know that, you know, as these things come up this year, you know, with like the bonding and stuff like that, I want you guys to know that y'all weren't the only entity that was hit with those. I actually have three clients that had bonding issues this year. So it's one of those things that are impossible to everybody get in.
I hope they change the standards on them too.
Yeah, the standard changed January 1st, 2023. But if you were already in a policy, you didn't have to fix it until you came out of that policy. And those are on annual renewals or, or calendar year renewals or, you know, your fiscal year renewal. So it hit everybody this year, basically, so.
Frankie, I know you said total expenditures was 37 million-ish.
For the general fund.
How does that relate as far as do we, do we, were we under budget as far as we did not expend what we budgeted?
Yep.
So you, you know, Leanne's, she mentioned $103. Well, we, we have lots of accounts. And while she had to mention $103, there's $10 million. The overall, the bigger picture is you had $10 million or about that in revenues over expenses.
For the general fund.
So it's, sometimes it's, we get caught up in those little, you get caught up in the $100 issue when it's a $10 million issue.
That could have been a $2 issue and it would have still came out.
Yes, I'm sorry, but yes, it would have. You know, we just try to follow what the local government commission requires. And they say, is there any deficit and, or is there any overage in the fund? And, you know, it doesn't matter how much it was. It doesn't matter if someone just didn't get a transfer in, in time. We still have to.
We have enough to cover, in other words.
You do though, yes.
We're going to throw the barbecue.
Yeah, and so when you respond, you're responsible to the government commission like, yeah, we'll be better on this $103.
We ain't got to put that on Marketplace.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Appreciate it.
Any questions, guys, anymore?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you so much. That was a lot.
Mr. Chair, we have the consent agenda next. We have several items on the consent agenda. We have a project budget ordinance for the airport beacon replacement project, the Truian financial reports, request to advertise unpaid 2024 real estate taxes, approval of tax abatements, the appointment of Curtis Bennett to the planning board, appointment of Bernie Blake to the airport advisory committee, appointment of Lucia Rodriguez to the JCPC, reappointment of Brent Salazar to the JCPC moving from slot 12A to slot 20, and the register of deeds report. Any questions about consent agenda items? If not, a motion is in order.
Can I get a motion, guys?
Just, I'll put Curtis Bennett for the planning board. Does anybody have any questions about him, his capabilities?
I heard he was a real good candidate.
He's, he's very good. He's well, he's no stranger to the permitting office. He's, he knows, he knows pretty much what's going on.
Bernie Blake, I had talked about, we talked about in a meeting about Bernie Blake for the airport board. He's a, he's a real good one to be there. Just about lives at the airport.
I'd make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion from John. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Big Steve.
Steve.
Big Steve. Any discussion? Approved.
Mr. Chair, that would bring us to the county manager report. And I have one item, which is actually two action items wrapped up into one. We have our water plant improvements, as we will generally call them. So the two actions requested would be approve of project ordinance for the water plant improvements and then approve a resolution to award the construction contract for those improvements. I think we've talked several times about the water plant project. We initially sought the project with the intent of using ARPA funds. When those funds became available a couple of years ago, we went through the design and expressed the needs, both on the process side and the facility itself. And we advertised for bids, didn't receive them the first time around, second time around. We received one bid. And it was just slightly above what we thought it was going to cost originally. And we did a little bit of value engineering, shaved a little bit of the cost off. But the project is ultimately going to come in, or the contract is $5,473,900. And the bidder or the proposed contractor is Garren Cove Incorporated. Now, you will notice that the project budget is a different number than the contract amount. And that's to build in some contingency. With facilities, as they get older, you do not know what might, what may be there. And you could be surprised that we, something we may have to address as the project's ongoing. So that would be, that would explain the difference between the budget and the contract amount. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the project. Again, it's both improvements to the building and process improvements at the plant.
And one motion will take care of both of these?
Yep, there's a suggested motion on page 190 of the agenda packet and a motion to take care of both of those is suggested there.
And we didn't get the 15-year roof?
No, this would, we, we were only able to shave some, some of the funds off. We were not comfortable with, you know, building a 30, 40-year building around it and putting a 15-year roof on top of it. And it just, it just.
Didn't make sense.
Yeah, it didn't make sense. There was some suggestion about the storage of some of the chemicals. We could save some money on the structures and the location. It would ultimately lead to degradation of the chemicals, which would mean we'd have to buy more chemicals. So you're trading a capital cost for an operating cost. And that operating cost will catch up with you and surpass that capital cost over time.
Always does.
It'll still be a flat roof.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's still a flat roof.
I tell you, I didn't build a flat roof in my house, I don't believe.
I wish we could have put a peaked roof on it.
I understand.
To echo what you said the other day, this investment is so vital to our community's life.
Absolutely.
So it's, it has to be, we have to maintain.
This is the most critical piece of public infrastructure we have in the county. Without it, all our towns would be without water and obviously the county system itself. Very critical piece of infrastructure, the way we've got it set up and the utilization of our funds. This is, you're able to address this most critical piece of infrastructure and it will not affect your ratepayers. It's not coming directly from operational cost. It's, it's from savings, it's from other sources. It's from savings, it's from other sources. And typically, when you do a project of this magnitude, you're borrowing money. And we're not borrowing money. We're going to pay for it, and so.
It's going to give life to that facility for, you said fifty years, is that what the plan is?
Yeah, I would hope you're buying another fifty years.
Good deal.
And it also fills one of our problems we had on here.
Right, just as Leanne mentioned in her audit presentation, the depreciation of your assets. Well, yes, you can go in and change your schedules, but ultimately, some of these assets, it's not about changing your useful life. It's about repairing them and replacing them. So this is, our plant's, give or take forty years old, and it's time for a refresh.
It went online forty years ago, generally this year.
Yeah, so, it's due, as they say.
Yeah. All right.
I make a motion. Reapproved.
Second.
Only favor. Any discussion? Approved.
Mr. Chair, that's all I have for the county manager's report. There are some standard reports from various departments in your packet. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have on those reports. Otherwise, I do not have any additional items to bring before the board.
I understand we had some real good news in the health department this week.
Yes, we, our accreditation process, the onsite portion happened this last week.
Last week, yeah.
Yeah, and I had to get my days together. So that happened last week. We, I think we surprised ourselves. We feel a little better than we originally thought we would feel. The assessment went well, and we passed, at least preliminarily, we passed. And there's a chance we may receive honors. So that's a win for us.
That's a win. Anything else on your minds, guys? You have a motion?
Listen, John.
Second.
Second. Adhering, guys.